Hey. I miss it, that's a good time. Yeah, okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order of the City of San Juan Batista City Council. For. April sixteenth. And we have the pleasure legions. Let's go into our fudge allegiance. Ready, yes. This can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Freeman. Mayor Prochef Jordan. Here. Councilmember more, uh, Morris Lopez.
President.
Councilmember Sebastian. And Mayor's Frios.
Here. All right, we get start the meeting off right from the get go with a closed session. Do you want to just give a quick rundown and then we'll go to public comment if any?
Sure, yeah, we have a matter on item two A conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D. Of government code section five four nine, five six point nine, there's one case.
Thank you. Is do we have any public comment?
Seeing nobody in chambers, no, and no speaker cards received or anybody in Zoom.
Okay, thank you. We get to go to close session.
Cities fiscal year or sixty percent, seven percent of the fiscal year. Uh, your general revenues are running at seventy percent for the year to date. And your general fund expenditures are sixty three percent for the year to date. The net effect is a positive change, the general fund balance of a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. Uh, on your enterprise funds, your water enterprise funds revenues are at seventy six for the to budget for the year to date. And expenses are at sixty four percent. For the year today. Um, providing a positive change in the water enterprise fund of four hundred and ninety three thousand. Your sewer enterprise fund revenues are running at eighty three percent for the year to date. To budget, um, and expenses are at forty seven percent. And that effect is a positive change in the sewer fund balance of five hundred and seventy nine thousand.
Okay, thank you, uh, any questions, council?
Nothing for me, thank you Wendy.
Welcome. No questions, thank you.
No questions for me, any public comments, questions?
No speaker cards received and no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you Wendy, thanks for jumping back in there and filling in, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, next. Uh, reports from city council representatives to regional organizations and committees. Let's see, do you want to go first?
Thank you. Uh, last go meeting, we were, uh, provided a slide presentation by the executive director. On the wastewater MSR. Uh, it will be coming here shortly. Um, as the city of San Juan is a part of that. Uh, the fire district meeting, I'm not really sure what we accomplished, but if either of you two want to talk to that, that's great. Uh, intergovernmental, the big item there was. Uh, a discussion on the option to promote San Benito County as the home of Pinnacles National Park and. Uh, Superintendent Stransky was there and gave a beautiful presentation on. Uh, the park, uh, Solidad has the. Gateway to the Pinnacles, um, so there's, um. A lot of conversation on how to promote the park, how to promote San Juan, how to promote, um, San Benito County and Hollister. Um, and. Oh, good golly, they were talking about a hundred thousand visitors a year to the park who knew that go down twenty five. Um, to the park, um, absolutely amazing and beautiful if all of you or any of you have an opportunity to go to it. Um, it's absolutely gorgeous, especially this time of the year. Um. State Water Resource, uh, sorry, San Benito County Water Resources Association, uh, the. Biggest thing there is, uh, Sean Novak, uh, who does conservation and does it very well, um. Uh, reaching out to all of the high schools in the community, uh, YouTube, um, Facebook videos. Uh, all about conservation, which the city of San Juan Batista can, um. Can, can utilize. Uh, he announced his retirement, so he has a couple of months left with them and and then he's retired. Yeah, lots of changes over at the the district. That's it.
Gosh, say, is there anybody left? Hundred thousand people in the Pinnacles. I would never guess that. Huh, okay. Got anything, you had COGS.
Nothing to report, did I report, I think I reported COG last time.
Oh, last time?
Yeah.
The one I missed?
Was that this month, March?
That was last month.
It was last month. You know what to call this time, right?
No.
No, nobody did.
No, you didn't, you went.
Okay.
Remember, because they're after us, so that kind of always throws me too.
Yeah, okay, so I did, um, as an alternate, because Mayor Frios was not in the country. I did attend the COG meetings and there was a closed session, um, but basically it was a lot of talk about the. Um, Highway one fifty six, um, work and also the roundabout, that was the topic of discussion. And of course, Highway, um, twenty five. With, um, certainly not in our county, but it does affect our county because of our commuters out. Of the, um, interchange or the, um. The, I guess it's intimate domain of the turnoff to go on one oh one north. Where the garlic, uh, is it the garlic farm? Yeah, that that's one, uh, Highway twenty five that that intersects with, um. One oh one, so there's a lot of talk about that, that work coming up and. Projected more traffic, um, that will be temporary, but it's just, you know, future things and just. The, uh. The transportation issues that we're dealing with daily, so that was the topic. Um, and I'm not at liberty to discuss the closed meeting, but it went well. I can say that, thank you.
Thank you. I think part of that, um, twenty five mess, they're going to shut down the off ramp to twenty five from. Southbound one oh one, so be prepared for a bunch of traffic to be routed through San Juan. Yeah, they're going to close that because they're putting a stoplight in. Yeah. Okay, um. Fire district meeting. We have another one Thursday. Uh, probably talk about the exact same thing we talked about the last six, so, um, not much moving forward on that so far, so, um. Hopefully we'll get some of the information. And then, um, you're going to cover our SAC trip. Sacramento trip a little bit, is it in your, is it? It's not, okay, no, no, I can, um, I can give and please jump in there, um. Myself, uh, Leslie, John Freeman and Dawn went to Sacramento two weeks ago. Three weeks ago, yeah. Yeah, um, we met with representatives from, uh. Robert Rivas's office and Anna Caballo's office. Uh-oh. We just want to find. Standby. Hey. We said something. Yep, and then, and of course, the water board at the EPA building, which was a. As Leslie said, we overdressed for this place. It's interesting, building is what, twenty seven floors and they're only occupying one floor? Just, which was kind of odd. Yeah, um, uh, the meetings went well, um. Little bit of mixed. Emotions, um, I think we. From the water board, we didn't get a whole lot of. How do I put it, encouragement? Because of the state. Debacle, what's going on in the state budget right now, um. The representative from, um. Speaker Rivas's office. Uh, was on, he was on the ball, he really knew what he, he knew our area, he really knew what we're doing. And he mentioned the word, uh, he goes, I deal with, he left this whole list and he said water and parks and Leslie, I went parks, so. So, yeah, we were able even talk to him about parks stuff and he was somewhat. How do I put it? Favorable?
Yes, I think it was very.
Yeah, yeah, they were both favorable, so, um, you know, in in trying to help us with with this about everything. Sounds like the governor's projections and then the actual. Dudes that do the, the guys and gals that do the number crunching are off by about, you know, just a measly. Fifteen billion dollars, so, um. Stay tuned on that one, I don't, we'll see if we get out of that mess. Um, all in all, it was a great trip or our. Our lobbyist, I I have to say, I'm I'm really happy we hired this firm, he, um. You know, he was able to. Guide us through the puzzle palaces, um, pretty interesting, um. World that they live in up there, um, and you know, that's a. You you don't really think of Sacramento as being kind of that big stage, but I mean, we're a huge state, so it's a really big stage. Um, and it was pretty interesting being on the, what was that, the seventeenth floor of the of the, um. The Assembly Building and. All this. And people were just moving and there's stuff going on constantly, it was pretty cool, it was a, it was a great event. It was a, it was a great learning experience, I'm glad I went, so. Yeah, of course, yeah.
I I thought that, um, both the speaker and, uh, the senators staffers were very amenable, um. And and took great notes and asked wonderful questions. Um, and then at the end said, sorry, we don't have any money for you. Uh, but we did get some asks in there and and that was great and, um, Dmitri Semenov, who has been working with us for. I don't know how many years now. Uh, on our water, uh, issues. Um, was was wonderful and, uh, I may. Ro- Rojas, who is our lobbyist, uh. Um, yeah, went was wonderful navigating us through, uh, gave us all speaker points and. And what to touch upon and I I gotta say, our our mayor did a great job of portraying our our little city, um. And and why we need what we need, it was, you did good.
Thank you.
You did good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, Dmitri, that was a, he he's a huge. Acquisition, he's virtually round draft pick right there, um. The guy at the water, guy at the water board was talking about. Some applications, two page application, I look over and I'm I'm waiting for him for any moment now, just open his computer and just crank it out, because I'm this. How competent this guy is, so he probably did when he went home. He's probably eating a bowl of ice cream and cranked it out. So, so, yeah, it was a, um. That was a good visit, really good visit. Um, okay, uh, city council announcements. Anything coming up, Leslie? Go ahead.
Uh, we have the rib cook off. Not this coming weekend, but the next weekend, three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That's all I think. And Earth, uh, yeah, Earth Day and Peak Day, what?
Okay, yeah, this is something pretty huge, um. I've been talking to city manager Don Reynolds, I reached out to the office of Zoe Lofgren. Our Congresswoman, um, last month I called her. When I, uh, found out that she made a visit to Hollister and met with the mayor. And a couple of the supervisors, so I said, hmm, why ain't she coming here? So I reached out to her office that day and no kidding, I got a call back from her. Schedular directly to my number and had a conversation, email and conversation. And so she was very amenable to coming and meeting here, and that is to arrange for, um, Congresswoman Zoff, uh, Lofgren to come here. And meet with us, so I then quickly shared the information with, um, Don Reynolds, our city manager. And it looks like there's a potential meeting in May. So the details are not formalized yet. But they're pretty close, so that's huge because, um. She is our new representative at the federal level. Previously, um, before they did the redistricting, it was Jimmy Panetta. And so for me, it's huge and I think a lot of us sitting up here and probably in the county. Um, we really feel like we lost a good one because he's from the area. But he's now further south and so. I think it's time that we meet with our Congresswoman and she gets to know who we are, what our needs are. And perhaps we can capture, um, some federal dollars to help with our city as well. And she become familiar with who we are, because we get sort of left behind. We're a tiny little city of less than twenty five hundred people. But we're very important in the county and in the history of California, old California history, so I think it would be who goes to really. Get her to come down here and meet us. So, thank you.
Can I expound on that a little bit, uh, the Congresswoman is a is a huge proponent of, uh, San Juan. Um, she has worked with, uh, us. Uh, since before the redistricting, um, close friend of Congressman Panetta. Senior and junior, although they're not senior and junior, um. And, uh, has has been working with Jimmy, um, ever since the redistricting to, uh, get the background on on this area for all of the. Uh, service area that she acquired, um. She has, uh, gotten money for. Uh, the mission and the state park, uh, for, uh, that has matching funds associated with it. Uh, one for the the buttressing of the the entranceway, uh, and for the state park, um. So she has actually been here several times and super excited that you gave her a shout out. Um, because she does, she does respond instantaneously, I was kind of shocked. Uh, and and pleasantly surprised and thrilled at the same time, uh, that she is very responsive, uh, to to us and thanks for bringing her down again.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, um, I'll just go ahead and. Hit the peak day thing again, it's a peak days on, um. April twenty eighth, eleven thirty at the VFW. And it's kind of a double event, um, right after the peak day celebration, there will be a fundraiser, the clampers are running a fundraiser. Um, and they're going to be raising money for school supplies for San Juan, for the city's first M one's, um, school, I think it's a. I can't believe I'm saying this, a cornhole tournament, so. Cornhole tournament, yeah, um, and they're, they have pretty, they they have some pretty big tournaments, so that should be pretty fun. Um, and also I have something, I guess. It wasn't really regional, um, well, it was kind of regional, but, um, Leslie and I attended the. Portions of the Poppy Jasper Film Festival.
Yes.
Um, I went to, uh, the first day we had it here, the cartoon day, which was really cool, it was fun. Um, and then I saw that, uh, I kept getting up the updates from, uh, from Sean. Um, Fitz Harris and, uh, at one point in time, the barn out at Kurosakis was full, they had had all the seats full. And then, uh, I I ended up my. Experience at the, um, film festival by sampling the. The beer sampler in in at the Mad Pursuit, um, four breweries and one cider house made, um. Beers just for the ceremonies or the the this festival, so, um. Pretty fun, it's amazing that. We're, this is our third year in a row now, they picked us, so we're pretty happy with that. Yeah, totally.
I forgot about that, thank you, uh, closing night is tomorrow night, uh, in Gilroy, where they'll they'll be, um. Doing some, uh, all day, all day films and then at the, uh, last block from seven to nine, uh, Girls Inc. Twenty two, uh, young ladies from Girls Inc. will be. Attending a presentation, a full, a feature, uh, documentary on a chef. Uh, the movie is called Fork, it's kind of funny, um, the experiences of what it takes to. Uh, be in the business, run a business, own a business, fail at a business and pick yourself up again. Uh, all while having a beer or. Two, um, so that's super cool, um, and our own Cesar Flores, former mayor of San Juan was, uh, awarded. Uh, I forget what the award was, but, uh, but last night at the Teatro, so that was really cool, um, congratulations, Cesar, sorry, I missed it.
Thank you, oh, yeah, one of the films I missed, unfortunately, I wasn't able to get to it was, um. It was a documentary on a, on organizations just in the northwest in San Martin, it's called Freedom Pause and it's a. It's a, uh. Um, it's an organization that trains, uh, service dogs for. Um, not only for veterans, um, but that's the large majority, um. Uh, I know that I have a very good friend that, um. Freedom Pause saved his life, uh, and, um, and, um. Yes, yeah, and and. For the veterans it is, and my little dog, LaShawna, they're going through it to do. Um, during the, they finished their first round, they're going to go through. The second round shortly, they do a third round and and our dogs will become a comfort dog for the. For like kids and stuff, and then she also gets her service dog ring, so, um, Freedom Pause, um, I'm gonna throw a plug out there for him. Um, they also do doggy daycare and they do boarding, so San Martin, it's not too far away. Um, great organization and and they've survived, they they've been here about, uh, been going about ten, ten fifteen years now. Anything else? Okay. Oh, that's right, they showed up, yeah, shoot, I wish I would have been concerned. Um, okay, Dawn, you're up, city manager report.
All right, thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, we do have some, uh, uh, some staff here to help present, uh, for their own interests and so I want to. Uh, be sure and focus on them first and and take advantage of their presence, thank you for. And we'll start, uh, with the public safety report from Roy. And then you can introduce Desi and Desi can give us a quick update on the sheriff's department.
All right, good evening. So I, um, Councilman Sebastian had requested a slideshow. Or a couple of slides just to kind of explain my position and. Just summary of services, which I did, so you should have about four slides in front of you, the first ones for from the sheriff's office, just kind of quits. Quick, uh, statistics on what they. Their performance for the last month, they had one stolen car that I thought we talked about last month, but it was a, um, car over in. Near, uh, Rancho. That was stolen and recovered in this, in outside the city of Watsonville. So that was a a task force that actually found that vehicle, worked with the sheriff's office to recover that one. Then I have the stats for the fire department, they have fifteen medicals. And fifteen vehicle accidents, no fires thankfully. And then code enforcement contacted some food vendors during the, um, the festival. And then they did some follow up on a reckless go kart. And one dark dog barking complaint, that was pretty much it for the services. And then I also have, uh, some events that were that happened and that are coming up, so we had the Arts and Crafts Festival last month. Due to the rain, and I think I saw most of you there, um, the numbers were very low, we did have one arrest for public intoxication. On Saturday around noon, it was extremely rainy and wet and those will probably. Mention it real quick, but that was all we had, that was the most action we had that weekend thankfully. Uh, and then we have the rib cook off coming up. So I've been working with, um, our parts director Caitlin. On this event, so we had a planning meeting that, uh, happened last Thursday. With partners from OES, FIRE, myself, the sheriff's office. So we're coming up with the incident command, which will be here at city hall with all the emergency partners. And then we have two deputies assigned every day. For that event as well as, uh, private security for that event as well. So FIRE will have their mule next door for easy access, uh, in and out of the event in case it's needed. So we had that and then I have an update on the flock camera system. So installation for most of the flock cameras should be mid-May. Um, we have two that are going to be permanent, the one that's here at city hall and then there's another one. And we're just waiting for an electrician to get to those, which we should be handling within the next week. And then the other one should be all done by hopefully mid-May, I have a, uh, date of May sixteenth. And then we're looking at one additional in the copper leaf area. Um, so that's coming up as well. Uh, just another quick thing that's not on my slideshow, I did attend a county partners active shooter training. So FIRE, uh, law, officer emergency services are getting together and establishing a committee. For an active shooter training for the entire county. Um, they're going to host it in the city of Hollister and possibly here, as a second location, so all the partners got together for that and they're starting a committee. Which I'll probably be a part of. So that'll benefit our city tremendously. And, yeah, that's about it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank, thank you, Roy, Desi, do you want to contribute?
Take advantage. Thank you guys for having me today, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, just to kind of update with us, I guess, the sheriff's office, ever since, um, Roy Morales, I mean, his manager Morales, but. Um, he's been just a huge asset for us, kind of being able to, um, just bridge the gap between city and us, I mean, he handles a lot day to day, he takes a lot off our plate, so. Um, just having someone like him in that position can helps us out day to day, I mean, me and him talk literally every single day, even when I'm not working, so. No, but he's just a huge asset for us as the sheriff's office, just being able to go through him to kind of, you know, things and same, so if he needs any, you guys need anything, you just go through him, so. Just having him as a, as an ally for us is just huge, so thank you guys.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. And, um, Rochelle, thanks for coming, can we get a quick update on the library?
Rochelle, I know, sure.
Good time, yeah, good timing.
Uh, before I begin, I'm going to pass out those. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
And Liz.
Do we have the slides? If I could invite Charlie to duck, while you set that up, please. Yeah, why don't we invite Charlie, Charlie, been doing it for a chief's on the line? In the spirit of public safety. Charlie, thanks for coming tonight.
Hi, I'm there. Oh, thanks, thanks for, thanks for calling me, Roy did a really good job with that, we are working on with that, um, he did give the report, uh, we were, we are starting the weed payment process. That'll come to you tonight, um, I, we did complete our portion of the incident action plan. Um, I did get that, um, for the rib cook off. So I'll add that with the the portion that you created, Roy. And I'll send that over to you tomorrow, so you should be getting that, and we'll have one complete set. Available, but it is, um, sensitive to the public safety only, so, but you guys will have access to that, um. And we will be ready for that, any and any other questions? Comments, concerns?
I do, thank you, um, on the inspections, uh, it mentioned. Uh, residential. I I just have a question. On. Uh, at at what point, and I guess this goes to, um, the city manager as well, at what point? Does, uh. Uh, a residential building. Become uninhabitable or. Uh, warrant. Something further than a fence around it?
We can declare it a nuisance and then we work together with code enforcement, I mean, we've done some in the past, so if there's a, um. And you're talking about, um, a nuisance property, then we can. We can. Go through the process that we need to get to that, but we need to get it identified and we could send a letter. Go through the process that we need to get to that, but we need to get it identified and we could send a letter and work with code enforcement on that. Declare it a nuisance and go through the process where if we declare it, then we could, um. Once we declare it, and I'm sure it's in the code, I haven't checked out the code, but I'm sure there's somewhere where it says that we're able to abate it. And then recover those costs and up to leaning for all the costs and administrative fees and leaning the property. Um, but usually a lot of times we'll get compliance. Once we start, um, hitting them with the heavy letters, a lot of times they'll, um. Comply. But we need to get those addresses identified to us. And like we were saying, just call us at eight three one six three six four three two five. We don't need a name or address. We, I mean, we don't need a named reporting. We just need the nuisance property and we can. We can send our letter out and we'll CC work with code. That way, there's no delay. A lot of times we'll send our letter out. And then we'll turn it over to code. Well. We'll work with them and send it out to them at the same time. That way they say, okay, you've already had sufficient enough time. Now we're gonna give you ten days because they are aware of it too. So we'll hit it, we'll hit it a little, how do I say, uh? Won't be as lenient because we can't. It's California and, you know, when people are getting their homes, insurance rates canceled left to right, no matter where you are. We can't show any leniency on that because the state doesn't, and the insurance companies aren't showing any leniency. So. It, um, will be pretty, uh, enforceful on that part. If that makes sense.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question, um, for Mr. Morales. Uh, sorry, kind of advanced forward, but regarding the flock camera placement at Copper Leaf. Will that be at the exterior of the entrance? That's part of San Juan City, but it's on the south side. Where will that camera be?
So I'm still looking at a couple of power poles that are, that are out there. And then I'm gonna meet with the representative from Flock to see their actual. How that camera will extend and what they'll capture. So I'm still working on the precise location for that camera. And then I'll update the board once I do.
Just the point of clarification is that when you say copper lead. Some people in my, myself included, I said this neighborhood getting a camera. Yeah, but you know, so. We have to clarify, I think, make it clear that that's still part of our city and it's on the south side. And I think it's timely because I understand there was some graffiti activity on a historic building. So I think it's really timely, you know, that that is being considered on that side of the highway.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see here. Before we go to, to, nothing for Charlie, I, um, one thing on the, on the public safety and, um, I'm, I'm loving him. So I'm loving hearing these. Words being thrown out like planning meetings and incident command, incident action plans. It, it makes me happy to hear that, that kind of organization. It's gonna be nice if there's gonna be filling, somebody's gonna be filling out an ICS two fourteen for cost recovery too, I'm sure. So, perfect. Let's see, we ready for, we ready for Rochelle?
Yeah. Got our library slides up?
Hi, I'm Rochelle Egan, resident of the city and also staff member. Tonight I'm here as a staff member, uh, along with my coworker, Australia Sparza Johnson. Uh, thank you for, uh, allowing me to be here for this presentation. Uh, I'm here because the last presentation was in April of twenty twenty one. And I've had Spotty, uh, status reports since mid twenty twenty three. So this will catch us up and, uh, start fresh next month. Um, a lot is happening inside and outside of the library. Um, oh, should clarify, I didn't plan on going backwards and. Backdating reports. I'm just gonna start fresh next month, uh, for this month. Um. On here, you can see that we had about forty boxes donated from Melt Commons Collection. He's a former Teatro cast member and stage manager. And also at the same time, we had been waiting about a year. Uh, when Sharon Johnston's estate finally brought in about twenty boxes, uh, from her, uh. Estate. And then outside the library, we had the mural from, uh, Venencia Prudencio. Um, and that is, uh, on the north side of our building. Uh, what we do. So we started out as just a reading room and, and book exchange back in eighteen ninety five. The city council in nineteen oh five, uh, passed an ordinance that's still on the books. Uh, sometimes you think of it as being in twenty oh five, but it, it really is nineteen oh five that you established the San Juan Public Library. The pictures that are in the library are Clara Zeneta. Um, she, uh, oversaw the library when it was the reading room in the Texas Lodge. Um, uh, Yvonne. And started there and then brought the library over to Carl Martin Luck Memorial Library. Um, in nineteen seventy nine, when the Luck family. Uh, queefed that property to the city to be used as museum, library and park. Um, and then Dr. Pat Larkin is the only librarian we've had that has the masters in library informational science. She brought us into the twenty first century. Bringing in a grant with, uh, the computers and which we've now replaced with laptops and two desktops still. And then also getting our, uh, ILS informational library system online so that, um, we have a digital database. Between that time and now, there's been at least four different databases. Each time bad data has been transferred forward. Um, when I was hired. Dee Dee knew me to have a little bit of tech experience. And on my very first day, she said, um, what other. Answers do you have to my questions? And I thought, well, you hired me. I think I should be asking you the questions, but she was not, uh, as tech savvy and, um, she did, uh. Let me know about the community and where the library books were and everything. And she did a great job keeping the building open for the twenty years that she was with us. So I am very grateful to her for that. Um, some of the things I do, I guide programming, I coordinate volunteers, uh, and all the other things you see there. I average about thirty hours a week. Australia is at twenty hours. Our coworker that is leaving us on Friday is currently at nine hours a week. So we have been understaffed for several months. And, um, there is a backlog of cataloging that needs to be done. So, uh, we are working on that as we. Continue to collaborate with our community partners, um, some of which come in on a weekly basis, like the Scouts, Boy Scouts of America. They're there most Monday nights from seven to eight. Um, they do still use the scout house for the Cubs and, um, the scouts that meet with us are the girls troop. So that's the. Trip two, four, two, eight. The boys troop is just four, two, eight, and they are currently on hiatus. Oh, we also have the Small Farmers of California Coalition coming in. Uh, it started out with about ten members and now we're on average thirty out, thirty members. Uh, currently there's about six of them at the library, uh, in the back meeting room, doing some, uh, business that we couldn't be on site for. Um, about once a month, the senior center board comes and, uh, meets in the back room and, um. The back room is also currently housing a rec department. Um, so that has had us kind of reshuffle. We've been having more meetings in the main reading room and, um, just trying to. Continue to utilize the building as best we can, but we are rapidly outgrowing the space. Um, the, uh, students and residents use our building for not only books and materials. But for, uh, copy, printing and laminating, all of which we charge for, uh, tech support, which we provide for free. Uh, we are a safe haven and welcome center for all of our residents, including our unhoused community. Uh, sometimes it's a little difficult for us. Uh, one member of that community recently yelled at us, uh, repeatedly over the course of a couple of days. And we're thankful that they have not been back. Um, they are welcome back, but we need to have a talk with them about the, um. The way in which they interact with us at the library. Uh, we're also respite from weather. So, um. Not too long ago on Labor Day, it was a very hot weekend and we, uh, would normally be closed because of the holiday, but we were open as a cooling center. Um, the other two programs that we have are, um, the notary service is something that is kind of, um. Going away a little bit. Delia and I are both notaries outside of our work with the city. Um, as a notary, the state of California requires that if somebody comes to you with fifteen dollars in hand to pay for notary services, we have to do it, no matter what time of the day or night. So when we do that currently, we clock out for a little bit, do the notary service and then come back on staff again. Um, and we can't do that if there's only one of us on staff. Um, we often do fly solo at the library. So it's gonna be a little bit difficult until we get a replacement and then, uh, we can. Provide the information for them to contact Delia, but, um. Anyway, that's aside. And then our zipbooks grant that we have the six thousand three hundred thirty two dollars. We have roughly three thousand remaining to be spent by June thirtieth. Um, some of the other services, this is a slide that was prepared, uh, predominantly by the California State Library. Um, the two that we're most concerned about is the brain fuse help now. That's twenty four seven online support for students K through twelve. Uh, that is not in the fiscal budget for next year for the state. Um, the California State Park, Parks Pass, which is also very popular. We have fourteen passes available. Currently only two are available as the other twelve are checked out. That is. Flipped from a year ago when we only had two checked out and twelve available. Um, the career pathways, there's several different things there. Uh, I often highlight LinkedIn learning because people put their resumes on LinkedIn and you can, um. Learn a new skill set and then have that, um. Document on your LinkedIn profile saying that you're proficient in whatever course you've taken. Uh, these next four slides were prepared by the, uh, San Benito County Public Health Service. Uh, we've expanded our, um. Partnership with them. We began back in twenty twenty one when we, uh, provided three mobile vaccine clinics for COVID shots. And now they're, uh, returning to us with, uh, still COVID shots, also tobacco and, uh, opioid, uh, crisis training. Uh, so they've been passing out Narcan after informing people how to use it. Uh, we have two boxes currently available at the library, uh, that we are able to administer, having gone through the training. The training was like thirty seconds. It's not that long. Um, so, um, I'm gonna slip through this one because it's a, a lot of text. Um, and I've already described the programs that they have to offer. I just wanted to provide them verbatim so that you have the full. Uh, text of what they provided. Um. They are coming once a month, the second Thursday of every month at three, three P M, two to four. Um. And so their first time here, uh, they provided, uh, four vaccines and passed out eleven Narcan kits interacting with fourteen residents. And then the way we get everything done is with partnering with all of those various community, um, programs and, um. Businesses and, uh, services. Um, we have a lot of help from our community and, and friends of the library, which is known as the San Juan Batista Library Auxiliary. Um, the ANZR High School Students Community Service Hours also, um. Oh, today's not Friday. I, I got worried for a second. We have a usual student that comes every Friday and, uh, she wasn't there today because it was Tuesday. Um, and then our city staff, our patrons and local businesses, um. When we are open, currently, uh, we are observing daylight savings time. So we're open eleven to six, Monday through Friday and Saturday eleven to two. Um, that six P M is a soft close. Um, I was talking to a patron yesterday and he said other libraries flip their lights on and off. Half hour before they close, they announce fifteen minutes before they close. I often tell patrons, I'll probably be here till six thirty. Go ahead and hang out until I'm ready to go. Um. When daylight saving time ends, uh, which is the first weekend in November. We, um, switch back to closing Tuesday through Friday at five P M. We don't really get a lot of patrons after dark. So. The only reason we stay open till six on Mondays is because the scouts are using the building. Uh, we are closed Sundays and most federal holidays. Uh, we don't. Honor Juneteenth yet, um, but I'm hoping we do in the future. Um, where we're going, um. Several months ago, we mentioned that we were gonna be looking at a review of the library. Um, so that could mean a luck librarian recreation master plan, a library master plan, recommend master plan, whatever iteration that ends up being, um, that is in our future. As is the, um, conceptual plan that was started back in twenty twenty when I believe the library hosted. The first hybrid meeting, uh, at the library for that, uh, initial. Program. Um. Think I touched on a lot of the things that. I wrote here. Oh, uh, spring of twenty twenty three, we worked with the county library to host three Chromebook and hotspot giveaways. Um, the hotspots, uh, are no longer working. They, uh, can be taken to a, um. Mobile service and restarted, but the free hotspot portion of them is no longer. So they don't have, uh. You know, they're not used as Wi Fi's anymore. Um, and then the Chromebooks continue to be usable if, uh, patrons still have them. They, uh, were checked out for the lifetime of those devices. So. That is that. Thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
Yes, hold on a little quick.
Sure.
Hi, thank you. Um. The Public Health Service Mobile. Yes, it comes once a month. What date does that come on? The second Thursday of every month?
Second Thursday.
From two to four. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. That was a very good report. I didn't know all that happened. I just thought it was books.
No, in fact, that happens with a lot of patrons. They came, come in looking for a book and then, so they check out a book. The next time they go, oh, you have movies. And so then they check out a movie. And then the next time they go, oh, you have tech support. And so they keep adding services. Um, that is one thing I did miss. So thank you for reminding me. Back. So I did this, these, um. Snapshots of. Uh. One year from March twenty nineteen to March twenty twenty. So the, the one year before COVID. We had twenty eight hundred checkouts. During COVID, that same twelve month period, we had five hundred twenty checkouts because we were open for curbside service. Patrons came in to use the computers. Um, we were, uh, phone support for a lot of people. Um, I was getting text messages all hours of the night. Sort of thing. Um, and, um. This. The year following that, so into twenty twenty two, we had come up to almost eighteen hundred checkout. So we're kind of recovering, but we're still about a thousand shy. The last twelve months ending March twenty twenty four, two thousand nine hundred eighty two. So we are definitely up in our materials circulation and, um, it feels like it.
My eighty seven year old mom is a frequent flyer.
She makes very good brownies.
Are they those? Are they those kind of brownies?
They were. Brownies to celebrate.
Yeah, but there was just a lot happening there. You know, I always feel like that's the important, um, gateway on that side of town. And I think there's just a lot of things going on behind the walls and then the park, when it gets expanded. It's just, I think it's great. Um, and I really like the idea that, that the, uh, health department's coming out. And I saw your stats that you guys, um, were able to give out eleven Narcan kits. And I think that's really important because a lot of people have the stigma. That that only is for people that may be using medications in a negative way or illegally, but that's also people that get. Bonafide prescriptions for chronic pain, um, for various conditions. And so it's always good to have that on hand. For anyone that would need it. And I think it's great that our little town was able to do that. That's awesome. Thank you for being part of that. And thank you also, Mrs. Australia for being here. Sorry about your arm.
Yeah. So. Um, thank you for that. We, we lost a patron to, uh, overdose in December of twenty twenty two. Sorry. Uh, which is another reason, uh, October is hard. We lost a lot of patrons in October of twenty one, twenty two and twenty three. So.
Yeah.
That time period, winter months are not good for, for the town. Good for the cemetery.
Thank you, Rochelle. Um. And, and on the, on the front of anybody coming in and yelling at you, regardless. What their status is, please, can you relay this, read nine one one or relay it to, uh. Roy and, uh, because we won't tolerate that, please.
Yeah, Deputy Villanueva was there with two cars pretty quickly. So we were.
Fantastic. Something a lot of folks don't realize, you know, I pop in every once in a while and talk to Rochelle. There was a family in town that dealt with a death in the family and they were trying to get through taxes and they, and I came to you to ask if there was. You know, tax help and there's a, there, there is these, that's the nice part about the library. They always have some type of reference to something. So these folks were able to get help. Um, and Rochelle says, you know, even if they're kind of on the edge of maybe making too much money. Those folks are still sitting in here and if nobody's here. Might also utilize their, sort of, you know, utilize their service. So, um, that was, that, that really helped that family because. That was a terrible time for them. So thank you so much.
Yeah.
Um, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I've not been here a while. Do I turn this off when I walk away or?
Yeah, you could just push the button.
The button? Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, go ahead. Do we have a public comment on that, on the library? Just by any chance? Nobody? Nobody out there in the. Cyber world. cyber world? No? Okay, okay, I'm just sitting in case somebody wanted to ask. All right, Dawn, you get the rest. Uh, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Rochelle. That was great. Thank you, Astrid. I wanted to take a quick moment to introduce our uh, while while my slides get loaded up, to introduce our new admin assistant who's helping and Chad is here uh joining us tonight. He's been here for two weeks. And he's been great. He's on a learning curve, but eventually we'll be able to open up our doors till five P M and consider the public for eight hours a day. So I want to say thank you, Chad, for coming tonight.
Welcome.
Thanks, Chad.
And then you want me to share my own slides? Well, all these uh in-person person status reports is really great. The staff wants to let you know what you're doing, what what we're doing. All right. So uh, some of my announcements include uh uh May third and May fourth coming up, uh, we have City Gate coming back in town. Uh, they'll be working with staff um to establish a city service philosophy. It's something that Stacy Bustow of City Gate is going to share with us. Uh, obviously going to meet with her and it's all based on the employee surveys that we did back in twenty twenty-two. Um, so we'll, from that, we'll have uh accepted definitions of what service is and detailed uh descriptions of of what our performance should look like to help with uh developing performance measures, which are then our employees will be held accountable through performance evaluation. So we hope to set the tone for a a service philosophy for all of our new hires as well. So we'll be having a a discussion about hiring philosophy. And I and I looked up this book uh because I've never heard of Patrick Lencioni before. Um, but I kind of makes me smile that uh his title, the famous book is The Five Dysfunctions of the Team. So we're gonna talk about a hiring philosophy, looking for hungry, smart and ideal team players um to to set the trend. And then uh we have a a summary of the goals that we worked on a year ago that I'll be uh sharing with the city council. And we'll have a a maybe a one to two-hour goal-setting session Saturday morning. And then uh for those in the community that are interested in joining in, we'll have like an open house after that. Uh, that'll all be at the library. Does that not go down? There we go. So um, we just talked about Chad. And uh how we're doing in that, filling that position. We've uh on-boarded Roy, as we know. Um, and he's doing a great job. He's getting to know all of our uh, all of our players, uh, the Sheriff's Department really well and that staff and the Fire Department as well. Um, he attended the Arts and Crafts Festival and I think the first time with a, with a public safety eye and instead of a uh uh resident eye, but he has both. That's really great. Um, and we're preparing a safety plan for special events like we've never had before. And I think we've already touched bases on that, so you've seen that happening. But we are recruiting our library part-time staff to help uh with the library and then with Delia's absence, starting on the Friday. We're also having interviews on Friday, right, Liz? Um, we have some good candidates from our admin assistant recruitment that could possibly fill the library part-time need that we have. Um, we are, we are interviewing maintenance workers. We have four finalists, four excellent uh candidates out of a hundred and four candidates. Um, and that's gonna happen early next week. And so we look forward to filling that vacancy soon. And we're also gonna try and get someone sign up as a part-time uh maintenance worker. Is one of our maintenance workers is ready to retire part-time, Carlos. Um, we have uh revised job descriptions on tonight's agenda. And that's pretty much uh with the H R activity that we've been working on. I am working on the the budget status. Um, we are gonna focus on the goals that come from the May four meeting and consider staffing changes. Uh, and it looks like uh, if the council were to approve the changes that I'm considering, we have a close to zero impact, uh, no additional costs. We'd be eliminating the assistant city manager position and instead hiring a uh an associate planner, a mid-level planner position. And then an economic vitality specialist that that associate planner would supervise. Um, also considering moving the rec assistant to a full-time rec coordinator. And if we can make these changes, I think it will uh make the, the city more robust at at zero cost. So that's, that's uh, but look forward to that coming up in the budget. Um, and our C I P, of course, will include the uh the pipeline from the West Hill Treatment Plant, fleet electrification, and we're starting to get some street and sidewalk money again. So we'll be able to roll out some street repairs in the next fiscal year. Um, zoning code changes, um, we have a workshop planned for May eighteenth. We talked about this with the planning commission at their uh April meeting. Um, and it's, there's two folds to it. They initiated as a re- as a revision to the temporary use of land permit. Um, because uh our current code does not allow outdoor retail and and only uh uh in commercial and and mixed, mixed-use zoning districts. Um, and we want to remove the reference to food trucks as a temporary use and instead create our a new ordinance. And so the second revision to the zoning code that we're looking at is a food truck ordinance. Right now, food trucks are not allowed on public property. So uh this food truck ordinance is modeled after a city of Monterey's. I mean, we know the city of Hollister recently adopted one and it allows food trucks on temporary basis, both on public and private streets uh with certain parameters such as limited hours and locations. Um, and and making sure that they're in compliance with the health and safety provisions. Um, the Fire Marshal Charlie shared with me all the provisions that the Fire Department is looking for. And we need to have a process to to make sure that all the cooking that goes on in food trucks is safe. Um, the gas station hearing is uh being scheduled for June. We thought we might make it for the the May agenda, but we're just gonna be a little bit short on that. So we do look forward to bringing the gas station forward for approval uh at the June uh uh planning commission meeting, and that's a big deal. Um, we have been working closely with them um and making progress. So thank hats off to Adriano Ortiz, our 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 community development director for helping move that project forward. Um, and with the approval of our uh local government status reports at the last planning commission, we forwarded those to the state historic uh Office of Preservation, Chipo. And um, we're, we're now supposed to be uh coming online to get grants for historic preservation, which means that we'll be able to have Meg Clovis get involved in in updating our historic preservation ordinance. Recreation, uh, we have extended hours to thirty hours per week. And she is newly assigned to special events and she and Roy have been working closely together. Thank you, Roy. Um, integrating uh city events with local merchants and nonprofits. Um, I think at the open house here for the Fire Department, Margos was out there selling a hundred and fifty root beer floats. That was, that's a pretty cool partnership where we can do that. So we're uh looking again uh for what we're calling May Movie Madness, which are Friday night movies in Rudy Park. And uh Margos was talking about helping cater that um or the possibility of having food trucks on the curbside. But I think we're gonna stick with the 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 uh the local local merchant selection. Um, we have the Earth Day event, which we've already mentioned a couple of times, a big event this year, bigger than we've ever had. So that's exciting. And then we are planning an Abbey Park event with food trucks. Um, we call, she was gonna call it Monday Night Lights. Um, but then she realized it was supposed to end at seven before it could start. So we're still working on some of the kinks with the Monday night event. I think uh Mayor Protem Jordan spa- uh inspired that event uh uh using the ball field and and kind of having a community picnic in Abbey Park. So that'll be a fun event for the summer to happen once a month. Um, uh, we are looking at establishing a community service program. And and this would be a process by which when a nonprofit comes to the city and requests a donation, maybe it was the A- Adult Education Academy uh recently, or some of the other nonprofits in town, that we have a a system in place where it matches our budget and we set aside, say, we budget fifty thousand dollars. And then we solicit uh applications for those. And we have a city council ad hoc committee that works probably with our rec uh assistant or rec coordinator position. And they come back to the council with a recommendation for funding. And we do this once a year. And that way we don't get sporadic, well, we'll probably still continue to get sporadic applications throughout the year. But we'll have a system that the community gets, grows accustomed to. And they'll all know to get in line in 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 March, April and get their proposals ready for the city council for the May uh budget discussion. So that's a program that Liz and I have both worked with uh before in other cities. And so we need to do something more sophisticated here and and roll that out so it's equitable for everyone. Um, Third Street Transformation Initiative, we uh are waiting to hear from a Caltrans grant application submitted in December. Um, we expect a call from Caltrans in June in favor of a three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. And we've, I've approved the preparation of a grant application called, uh, it's an A T P grant application. And it's due in June. So we'll be looking forward to bringing forward as close to seven hundred thousand dollars in grants uh to work on the um uh the uh the the Third Street and and uh and and Alameda Corridor. Uh, extending a bike, a bike, a bike path from from Highway one fifty-six all the way through uh to the uh roundabout and uh helping to connect the city better. So I just wanted to give the council uh an update on that. We'll be sending out a survey to the community in May and the survey results are supposed to be part of our application. So when you see that survey, you know what that's about. That's that's part of our active transportation grant application. Um, but it should be a an exciting plan, especially if both funding sources come through. The U G B Sphere of Influence Committee, uh, we discussed the concepts of three tiers in the planning area and worked with the city attorney to draft an M O U. Uh, and then we'll, we'll resolve a permanent agreement uh in the next eighteen months or so with the county. That was the recommendation that before we uh send an application to LAFCO with the approved map that the council addressed in January, that we have a tight agreement and relationship with the county. And we do have a good relationship with the county and they're open to our our suggestions and and our recommendations. So we look forward to formalizing that in the form of an M O U. So that way there is some protection and there is some written uh collaboration between the two agencies for those properties surrounding our city and the development of them. Um, so the, a permanent agreement would be similar to what we have with uh Hollister for Water, for example. It would have, say, up to a twenty-year term. Um, in some places, uh Ventura and Sonoma County is actually approved by the ballot measure. Um, and then it becomes an ordinance. So we're gonna discuss these long-term questions. But that's the status of the uh uh U G B Sphere of Influence Committee. Um, we're scheduled to meet next Tuesday with the draft M O U. Um, the water import, um, and I've had some conversations with uh Michael Ponse on this, so I can elaborate much further now. If if you like, Michael, I can dig into this. And then if you have questions, feel free to to come on up afterwards. Um, I I stated that there's not a lot of new information this month because approximately ten days, exec- ten days ago, the executive director was dismissed. And then shortly after um his assistant uh resigned. His last day is Friday and now Sean Novak is leaving as well. So we have a a seventeen-page uh study of blending water that we got out from our city engineer M N S. And I showed that with the council today. That, that, that document provides nine different scenarios for how much water we would import and what the impact would be on the chemical makeup of that water. And it's not perfect. Uh, and and that's, I think, the whole reason for doing the study. Um, but it is necessary that we import the water. I don't think there's any question there. It's just what will the net impact be and under what scenarios? Um, uh, blending under different scenarios, uh, blending during drought conditions when the wells are are near bottom. So we need to take that to the district, to their leadership and 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 discuss that with them. So uh we're on the brink of doing that. In the meantime, uh, I've been assured by the assistant who's still there um that that H D R is continuing with her design. So I don't sense that the project has slowed down a lot. Uh, but we're not making any progress on getting an agreement for the water import. That's the part that stalled the most right now. The the project design is continuing and it's still uh in line with our uh administrative order on consent and and with the E P A and and our settlement agreement with the water board. Those are mostly focused on the wastewater program and the wastewater program is doing well. Uh, it's moving forward. Uh, the the trench, the pipe is more than fifty percent completed. Um, and we're drawing down the the grant and and uh U S D A funds that we have set aside for that. So that's all moving uh great. Uh, the uh, the instability in the water district right now is not impacting our wastewater projects moving forward. So um, that's just a quick summary and I'm happy to talk more detail about any of those matters. Um, the Fire Department, and I put district question mark, it's because I thought we had a positive meeting with the county in Hollister. We saw an annual report uh shared by uh Acting Chief Dover. Um, and in that report, it talked about San Juan Batista being about three point eight percent of the whole Hollister Fire Program. Uh, Mayor Friel's and Mayor Protem uh Jordan attended. And we're trying to get the feasibility study back on track. The O E S Office of Emergency Services has limitations in the grant they're trying to use. And they came to us with a estimated cost increase of forty thousand dollars, which is like a fifty percent increase. Um, and uh they're expecting uh San Juan Batista to pay twenty percent of that cost. So that can, that's the conversation that's gonna continue Thursday, Scott. So um, and and Roy said that he could be there for you. So um, I'm interested to see how that goes. I'll, I'll be out of the office later this week. And we should be onboarding the chief real soon. Um, the, both the department and the city are looking forward to having our new chief and setup. Um, Ambag presented population estimates uh with the staff last week. We met for an hour to talk about these and they were quite surprising to me. Uh, for those folks who don't want the city to grow, that's what Ambag is predicting. Um, uh, uh, minus three percent in twenty twenty-three, uh, minus four point eight percent by twenty thirty. And then it begins to tick up again, doesn't return to two thousand for some time. So uh, this is a this is uh an effect of our rural county being included in a three-county estimate. So Monterey County is gonna definitely lose uh population. Santa Cruz County uh is definitely losing population, but ours happens to be the fastest growing in the, in the state. So uh I questioned these numbers, but I just wanted to share them with you because it is Ambag. It is, it is the, the board that represents us. Uh, Council Member Freeman represents the city on this board. Um, and he and I were talking about it today. He says they're just draft. So we have a chance to to ask more questions and inquire more about these. But um, it's a kind of a shocking change to me. I I've never seen a city in California not grow. Yeah, kind of weird. Um, in the governmental committee, we touched on this a little bit, the Pinnacles National Park. Uh, eighty-five percent of the three hundred and fifty thousand visitors travel, travel through uh uh probably Highway twenty-five, more than one fifty-six, and they generate twenty-eight million dollars annually. Um, the challenges uh addressed by the uh superintendent there were lack of parking and the dark sky uh that losing, that losing ground to the the dark sky efforts. There's a lot of efforts to preserve the dark sky around Pinnacles. That's very important. And then vandalism and graffiti has increased. Um, opportunities with them are rebranding. Uh, she mentioned uh in her presentation, a Condor Festival where we have events locally as well as at Pinnacles Park, take advantage of lodging and 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 uh food establishments in our cities and combine them with the pinnacle events. It's pretty cool, pretty cool idea. So she seems to be a very forward thinker and and I look forward to to working more closely with Pinnacles National Park. And that's it. And we spent a lot of this council meeting talking about ourselves, so. Sorry, sorry about that. There's a lot going on. Thank, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
Leslie, you're up. Anything?
If, if I can uh go to Public Works for just one second, um, because they weren't represented here. Um, yeah, I am so impressed with Nick. Sorry, I did, I lost my voice on that. I am so impressed with uh Nick, our supervisor for Public Works. Um, and and his reports, but it's nice to see that um uh since the bathrooms have been being locked after hours, that that we're reducing, um, I mean, it only makes sense, but we're reducing graffiti and and um vandalism in our, in our restrooms. Um, so thanks for that, guys. Staff training, welcome back, Stacy. Very much looking forward to it. I'll get to that later. Uh, budget status. So we can afford an associate full-time planner, a part-time economic specialist and uh go to forty hours and and it's not gonna cost us anything more than what we hired our assistant city manager for.
So Wendy and I just completed a a draft summary with a table on the back of it that I'm happy to share with the council now. I just got it this afternoon. And um, by going from the assistant city manager to associate is a pretty good savings. And so the combination there is a savings of about forty-five thousand dollars. And it also involves uh savings of forty-eight thousand dollars from not filling the project manager part-time position we have. So that creates ninety thousand dollars in the wiggle room to make adjustments from the other side.
Nice. Uh, the zoning code changes for the food truck ordinance, does that come before the council after it goes to? Yeah?
Yes, that'll be a form of an ordinance, establishing a new part of our zoning code. And that, that'll be a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, May Movie Madness, super excited about that. Do we know the movies that she's sharing or how do we find that out?
The licensing is pending, like forty-eight hours away, so she couldn't advertise the names of the movies, but they're, I'll just say they're old favorites.
Super cool. And that'll be on our website, on the city's website? And and Abbey Park really closes at seven P M?
Oh, it closes at dark, but it's a park with lights, so.
So we could still call it Monday Night Lights.
Yeah, we could, we could. Yeah. We're, we're gonna work on that.
Work on that, Caitlin. Uh, I like the, the whole part about um uh the city granting uh monies to nonprofits and having a cutoff date for that. That's super cool because we do get asked. Often. And I forgot to look this up when the Pinnacle Superintendent brought it up. Do we have a dark sky ordinance?
Yes, we do.
Super cool. I thought we did, and I probably misspoke during the the intergovernmental meeting.
That's I I double checked.
Oh, cool.
And pass it to the council.
Thank you for that. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
I have some online questions. Vice Mayor Gordon actually. Asked that important question, facilities of the assistants of the manager will allow the city to hire additional staff. I guess including in that ninety grand savings. We would probably also the amount that you would have paid out in benefits.
What we what we what we paid to resolve that issue is equal to what the current budget is. So we wouldn't recruit for that associate planner until July one.
The money is coming back to us, and so there's a net zero cost to the city despite elimination of that one position.
Yeah, it was an expensive position, so underfilling was was less than big. Yeah, I think so too. I'm proud of that.
And then welcome to our new office, Mr. Rocha. What is what is your title again?
Administrative Assistant.
Administrative Assistant, great, welcome. And he's from the big city of Hollister, who is not, yeah, who is not decreasing the population like us. And then the other thing I wanted to comment on, the zoning. For the food trucks. I think it's a great idea, but I do actually at this juncture, I mean, just put it out there, have some concerns because we've heard. You know, since I've been here for a little over a year, you know, a lot of our business owners come to us and. And talk to us directly and say that they're suffering, you know. From lack of business and, you know, we have the vacancies on Main Street. There's just a whole lot of factors. Sometimes I like food trucks, but I'm really concerned about how this is going to impact our our local businesses. And whenever we have, you know, events and whatnot, I know it's nice to have a food truck, but. Also, you know, how can we incorporate or invite our local businesses that do provide food, you know? And the Abbey Monday Night Lights, I think that's great because most places are closed on Monday night, so that was in fear with the restaurants. But I really have to take pause. And then the thing that I see also, mixed use, you use settings where you are. Talking about the possibility of allowing retail. I can't find the slide right now. There's a lot, I'm sorry.
Right, well, part of the part of the temporary use of land review was caused when a restaurant owner. Had a vendor selling tie-dye T-shirts on their patio. So it wasn't a food service, it was a different kind of service or or earrings or or other things like that, so it's not.
Because some of us, you know, and I'm not trying to be toot my own horn, but. Some of us live in neighborhoods where there's mixed use for commercial. So then that means that things are sort of like an amoeba kind of spreading out from the main third street. Or I'd say logical places, Abbey Park or even the lawn at the library for different events, but then you're talking about people's homes where. We want to go home and rest, you know, so then you're we're talking about perhaps having mixed-use. Businesses there or retail on streets. So I think we have to really be cognizant of where we're going with this.
Well, right, so it's within the current zoning. I I wasn't recommending changing any of any of the current zoning for that. But that we would allow those mixed uses to occur where where it is already zoned, mixed use of commercial.
Right, but even what I'm saying, we're so small that some of those mixed-use neighborhoods are right butt up against a house.
Yeah, that happens in every city.
Yeah, and we're small and we have smaller streets. You know, and and I see a lot of cars when there are businesses and food trucks that are parked on the wrong side of the street. They're sometimes blocking the street. And I see a lot of that going on, but. Anyway, I think we just have to kind of consider everything. And first and foremost, our local businesses downtown. That we don't zap their business, you know, that's my main concern. Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Did we hear if the water district assigned their their temporary general manager? Did that did it happen last night?
I'm not sure. I didn't have a chance to follow up.
It did happen. Okay, and it's Boitano? I just wanted to confirm it. Say the best for last. I like the idea of the food trucks at Abbey Park. You know, the Abbey family still pays attention on what's going on at that park. So what would be great is we have these little picnics out there and we bring some balls and bats and some gloves and. And there's some ball being played.
That was the whole intent of it, having baseball out there once a night or once a week and and having children of all ages. And we don't have equipment. And I said, bring your own bat and ball.
Yeah, perfect, yeah. I've got something to do. Yeah, let's see, that's that's huge. Because for for some reason, the Abbey family calls the Historical Society and asks this stuff. I don't quite understand that whole. That whole connection, but.
That's very, that's very King's group, right, the Citizens Committee?
It's a service club, yeah, but but I guess according to a couple of members of the historical side, they. They've been asked, are they still using the baseball? That's some prime real estate, so we definitely need to make sure we still have baseball.
Junior Giants is starting.
Yep, great. Perfect. I was I was worried that I was worried Junior Giants wasn't going to start because they just made that new park for them over in Hollister. And I thought, oh, man, they're going to move all that over theirs.
Our kids get to stay here.
Yay, okay. Okay, that's that that sounds awesome. Okay, that's your last. Fleet electrification. So we don't have to do this until two thousand thirty-five, is that correct? Electric vehicles?
Right, but there are incentives for putting in charging stations and other things that we could take advantage of.
Okay, but what I'm saying is purchase, when you say fleet electric, I'm thinking. Public Works Fleet Electrification.
There are limitations, yeah, but but we could definitely, our building and grounds could definitely use an electric cart. To put around town and they don't need it.
Yeah, I I agree. I totally agree with that. And it's not going to be cheap, so. But as far as the fleet, the pickups and things, you know, we have time. I mean, if if we we buy some new gasoline pickups. They're going to be surveyed out and dead by two thousand twenty-four or thirty-five. And right now, everybody's putting the skids on all-electric fleets or all-electric vehicles. That's becoming a big deal. I think Ford even said that's they're tapping out, so. Just worried about that. Especially since the batteries probably cost half the price of the vehicle once the batteries die. So that's that was the only concern. Hold on, I got my my stack over here. Thanks for the update on the. Water, it sounds like. We're probably going to be on hold a little bit with the water department.
One one thing I wanted to add to that, council, is a one-hour conversation with Laffman's office last week. An application submitted to Congressman Butler. And to and formal application submitted in March to both Rita's and Caviar.
For?
For water, for for grant.
The water, oh, yeah.
Paying federal money for water.
Yeah, huge. Huge. We did the Benito Link article was a little misinforming. Yeah, so. You mentioned something that. Well, if I think of anything, then bring it back. We can circle back. Yeah, yeah, go for it.
Fleet Electrification, three CE. Didn't give us a whole lot.
Fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I thought they promised us. Yeah, thanks for nothing.
Yeah.
But we'll we'll take another bite at the apple.
While our council member is out there.
Yeah, so let's just let's just not rush into it. There's still. This whole, the electric vehicle stuff is going to be, right now it's becoming, it's imploding. Even big, big players.
I don't think the governor knows that yet, though.
Yeah.
Allowing outdoor retail, this isn't, this is kind of what goes on at Vertigo. Not our retailers moving out onto the sidewalk, not our current retailers, retailers on Third Street moving out to the sidewalk.
It could be that, but I was thinking along the lines of having a third party come temporarily in your patio or.
Perfect. I would prefer that method than. Than having our our retailers coming out onto the sidewalks because there's no room as it is when. Some who do do that, I'm not sure that there's the.
Forty-four inches.
Accessibility. And and going back to the food trucks. There is going to be a section that says no permanent food trucks, like we currently have a permanent food truck?
We have two properties in town with a conditional use permit that allows food trucks and one is one is. We're eighteen behind us.
Not permanent, though.
That's what I was led to believe, but I need to look at the record closely. That that's why they were there.
So Eighteenth Barrel is once a week and the other location, I don't know the name of it. It has been, has been permanent. I mean, it's been the same food truck for months.
Well, I I'll thank you for the reminder.
Yeah, Eighteen Barrel is not a permanent, it's an intermittent.
Make a comment because you brought the point and just, I agree with you, Vice Mayor Jordan, about the retail on Third Street coming out to the sidewalk. I think a better term would be pop-up retail.
Yeah.
Up retail, yeah. Because those are not people that have shops in town.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else? Or go and take Mike's blood pressure for. Okay, okay. But that's coming up. It's it's under the action items and it's coming up. Okay, so that's, we follow a certain agenda, so, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Well, no, we're. Any public comment? We're at that, we're at that point.
Okay, thank you, Mike Ponse. I have a couple of comments and questions that I would like to. Be on the record for the public to know. My first question is of where and how can the public? Get the most recent info or numbers on the industrial users, domestic wastewater, put into our wastewater system? The other statement is. In reading the MNS memo. I asked how a San Juan expected to send its wastewater to Hollister's. Wastewater Treatment Plant, if it's out of compliance for TDS chloride and sodium. Because of way of Westfield's Water Treatment Plant's exceedance of chloride. Which is expected, which is expected to be San Juan's new water source for blending. In the MNS memo entitled Blending Scenarios for San Juan's Wastewater Flow to Hollister Treatment Facility. It provides nine modeled scenarios, like the city manager mentioned, indicating that the prominent. Prominent source of chloride in all scenarios was source water, regardless of the percent purchased water. This fact seems to suggest that compliance with the chloride limit of a hundred and fifty milligrams per liter. For both Hollister and San Juan may be an unattainable goal. So. Does that mean that Hollister. Might get not be able to accept our wastewater? And it seems that we need to to get, again, we need to get our industrial users under a pre-treatment control. At their facilities prior to the discharge into our collective system. And yes. It is written that San or Hollister won't even think about receiving our wastewater until we get that under control. Also, some way we need to convince residents to remove their water softeners. Which it seems to be a fifty-fifty problem, water softeners and industrial users. We do have an ordinance. Two thousand twenty-one dash oh six, which bans the use of Brian producing water softeners. But again, I ask, is this enforceable?
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. I think I think the city manager might be able to enlighten you with a couple of the. Don, do you have a couple tidbits for him and then? On the water issues?
The council probably hasn't had a chance to read this study, so I encourage. Even to have that on the next agenda so we can discuss it in more detail. And working with Tonya Cowell and the results of that study is to help us go to the water board, Hollister and the city. Because Hollister itself, without the city's water, is on the verge, or if not currently violating the chloride limits that are so restricted along there. And and argue and 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 try and get that that permit to change. That's that's one of the purposes of the report, to demonstrate that we've beaten the source to death and there's no way around it.
Okay. Anything else we were? Before we move on? Nope. Okay, let's see, we had fire department, correct? Do we have Charlie's report? Did he, you gave it? He gave that Public Safety Library Sheriff's report that was, we just lumped that in with the, yep, awesome. Sure if anybody else has shown up, okay. Consent. We have items, the consent agenda A through F. I'll start with the council. Does the council want to pull any of the items? But I'm sorry, there is something. F is table? Okay. F is if minutes, okay, perfect, thank you. So A through E.
I would like to pull D. And I can't remember if I want to pull C or not. No, I think I asked Charlie my questions already for C. Thank you, just D.
Great, okay.
No, no, mayor.
Okay. Anybody from the public want to pull anything on the consent agenda?
Seeing no speaker cards and no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve A, B, C, and E.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and E.
I will second that motion.
Mayor Potem Jordan? Yes. Councilmember Boris Lopez?
Yes.
And Mayor Friel's?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. You're up for D.
Thank you. I have I have a couple of questions on the Code and Community Service Liaison. First comment, I. I I like the City Clerk Administrative Services Director, hugely long title, but. It kind of goes along with the nine hundred and seventy-two bullets associated with it. Well done. Summary description. It talks about investigation and enforcement. That's just of our ordinances. And within the limits of the city of San Juan Batista?
Yes, assume so, yes. The others would be reported to the sheriff or or the FBI or whomever.
Okay. I'm asking only because it hasn't been the case previously. Commercial vehicle enforcement. We're now taking, it's my understanding, we're now taking photographs instead of. Kindly pulling them over and citing them for parking. That's a photograph of a of a big rig going through and citing them that way?
That's my understanding. I've had. That's my understanding, I've had a touch base.
I think I saw. In the code enforcement description.
Roy helped work on this description.
Okay.
And there's some stuff that.
Sorry, I contacted the uh. The recruiter this morning and had him update some of that stuff, that was one of them.
Okay, cool, awesome, thank you very much.
Ability is of pulling anybody over.
Thank you. Um, distinguishing characteristics, it talks about incumbent. Is that as in it is incumbent upon the person or are we talking about the incumbent person?
No, it's incumbent upon, yes.
Okay, cause I think.
It reads the wrong word.
Uh, uh, no, I think i- in one section, it's um. Uh, it it makes it sound more like the the person who exists currently that. Typical decisions the incumbent will make, so that's talking about the the future position holder.
Cause the the person in that position will make consistent decisions regarding general community services.
Okay. Okay. Um, just wanted to make sure we're not. Basic knowledge, international property maintenance codes, was that? I had never seen that before, uh, minimum qualifications, knowledge of uh bullet point number two, page two oh four. Minimum qualifications, knowledge of bullet point number two.
Well, I'm not sure where that came from, RGS helped prepare these. And I think it's just a standard for maintaining property, I I would refer to them, that that should maybe be modified to reflect our own due since.
It it's in there twice. Um. Again, in uh on the next page under experience, the last line. Combination Inspector International Conference of, oh, building officials, oh, okay, a little different. Um, and then PC eight-three-two certificate required within one year, what is that?
That's ability to write citations.
Oh, cool. Super cool. That would be good knowledge to have.
So we can, we can uh see clarification with RGS on the difference to the international, that that should definitely be more local. Thank you for pointing that out.
Uh, about driver's license, where to be insurable, oh. Oh, this might be a new job description, okay, I'm sorry, um MW one and MW three maintenance worker, one and two. Um, knowledge of bullet point number two, it's page one, bullet point number two. Leadership skills necessary to oversee and direct the work of other employees. What's what's Nick? This that I'm only asking because this sounds supervisory and I'm just making sure Nick is staying.
Oh, yes, no, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
But that would apply to part-time workers, um, maintenance worker two may supervise a maintenance worker one, that that can be relationship.
Okay, okay, oh, right, thank you for that clarification. Um, physical demands, it talks about, um, I think that's the last page of that. Uh, physical demands, bullet point two, um, drive a motor vehicle and heavy construction equipment. Um, there are lots of uh equipment, there are a lot of pieces of equipment that requires special certification. Like backhoes and things like that. Do our operators or we will ensure that our operators are certified for all vehicles that they are responsible for?
The forklift is the most.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I just had a concern um that we have a lot of. Uh, things in here for water and wastewater, and I know um a couple of years ago. We took that out of the job description and gave them uh in incentive, we incentivized and incentivized. Um. That by uh saying if you have certain uh water and wastewater certifications. Then uh we'll pay you for them, um, but it's not a requirement of the position. I just wanna make sure that um we are not. Uh, operating our water and wastewater systems without certifications. Um, anybody who is doing it and and that our current. Uh. Paid water operator understands that these folks are working under. His certification or his company certifications.
That that's always been the relationship that we've had with both our wastewater operator and our and our uh water system operator.
Okay.
Um, but we do encourage, and that's why this last section, I'm a special incentive. Because it could be a Sunday morning and we can get him, our maintenance worker out there, but we can't get our contractor.
Absolutely.
So they have to be certified to be able to turn the well on and off, et cetera.
Yeah.
You know that.
I do, that's why I asked, sorry.
Call council member Jordan to go out and.
Bring my spanarings with me. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions on D?
I think um. The title for, sorry, thank you. Um, for the liaison, but it's, but I guess. This person will actually be able to do code enforcement and. The liaison for me seems like someone that goes out and kinda makes contact with the public and talks about potential. Areas of concern, but he still has some teeth or she has some teeth with the code.
So you you touched on a really good point because we had a a good pool of applicants that Roy participated in the interviews for. And um the council had removed the word enforcement from the title when we adopted this position with the budget. Um, EJ in particular wanted to make sure that that was not part of the title. Um, and so um when we went through the interviews, we found out that no one with enforcement background bothered to apply. Cause it didn't have the word enforcement in the title, so we're suggesting liaison in lieu of putting enforcement in the title because the council was so. Concerned about that word being heavy-handed or I'm not sure exactly uh where EJ was coming from on that, but.
I don't know, to me, it's it's tran- transparency because this individual is the their main task is to talk about code. Violations and also they're the first initial. Uh, worker that would actually be writing the vi- you know, the infractions or enforcing the code.
Well, as as originally written, um, I I'm the one who stood up and said, no, EJ's gonna kill me if we do this. And and then Roy and RGS were saying, no, we need enforcement in the title, so.
You need enforcement in it, and I also think it needs to be very clear at the top of the description that that's part, the main part of their job. Liaison, I mean, I think that's wonderful, you know, that that's an unspoken thing that they have a quality debt to have. Public relations um experience and you know how to talk to the public and. Be polite and respectful, that should be any job that deals with the public, but. The reality is, this is a code enforcement position. That's what we want. I don't, I don't know, I don't think.
If the council wants to make that change, we can make that change tonight.
On one of us to decide. Because I think it's kinda like when I read that, I said liaison, wait a minute, I thought we were doing what. With making sure the codes are being followed if they're being violated. So liaison kinda seems to me like a community. Community field worker, you know, kind of a staff, so I don't know what's just.
Yeah, I was a little surprised to see that too, I I. Cause I thought we were shooting for a. Um, like a community service officer in a code enforcement.
Um. Right, and so the title was Community Services Officer. But that didn't attract any enforcement officers.
Yeah.
So that's why we went back to the drawing board on this.
We have codes and we have to, I mean, we're a nation of laws and codes and we need to. Enforce those, I mean, even the city clerk. Deals with codes, so um. Uh, uh, code's not a bad word, it's not a bad.
Enforcement that, if you go back on those minutes.
Yeah.
That my direction from the council was get enforcement out of the job though.
I don't, I don't remember that, I didn't. I may not have been there. Yeah, but. If we don't have a code enforcement officer, then. Yeah, that's the. Yeah, I. Um. How do we get that, how do we get that reintroduced?
That's that's what we'll do it right now.
So, I'll I'll make.
I I understand how we're doing this, we're doing, we're doing it?
Hmm.
Okay.
No, I know, I know you understand, I just wanna make sure we're doing it.
Code enforcement and community services officer, it was the title we had before.
I don't have any problem with that, do you have any problem with that?
Officer?
Community services liaison?
Code enforcement and community services officer, that's fine, I don't care, yeah, no, that's. Uh, okay, I make a motion to approve. Uh, consent agenda item D with the uh amended title change. To include enforcement and remove liaison and substitute officer. To read code enforcement and community services officer.
I second that motion.
Mayor Protip Jordan? Yes. Councilmember Maurice Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Frios?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so with that, we're done with D, right, this?
Yes.
We just did it, okay, I don't have to revote on a. On a considered item. I'm asking her because she yelled at me last time. Okay. Um, action item. A, uh, determine specific times and place uh consistent with municipal code. Five dash one dash one sixty-five and five dash one-six dash one hundred and authorize nonprofit organization hands our high school booster club. To sell safe and sane fireworks for the fourth of July.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, last year, um, the city attorney drafted three different resolutions. And the council got to uh sort through those and choose one. Um, but the one they chose is the one that staff is recommending that we do uh this time again. And reading from the minutes of last year's April eighteenth meeting, um, the city approved. Hands our high school booster club to sell safe and sane fireworks at the windmill market. Uh, the hours of nine AM to ten PM commencing at noon on June thirtieth and ending at seven PM on July fourth. Um, and I don't recall, was the time amended? Was that motion? Mayor Jordan was.
Yeah.
I think we did.
Yes, on on July fourth, they wanted a um end at seven, seven o'clock.
Worked the sales at seven o'clock.
Yeah, for the sale.
Yeah.
Okay, cause I'm just reading from the minutes.
Yes, and the discharge was ten o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, or.
Last firework.
Last firework in the sky, ten o'clock.
Thanks, it is.
And I think that uh and and they're here tonight, so you can ask them, but I think that's the, that staff's intent is to bring that forward to the city council for approval.
Okay.
Uh, do you have anything to add, John?
Nope, we're good.
I I have a question on it.
Yeah.
We have ten o'clock as the cutoff point for sales, but the windmill closes at nine.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and that was a another question last year and. I didn't catch it. Um, so I would move to change that to um nine o'clock with the closing of the windmill.
Okay.
I I just think it's safer all around.
And before we move, Jack, do you have anything before we move to the applicant, I have one question for. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I I think that we should probably be consistent with the property owners' um closing hours. Are are we sure that they're gonna not change their hours till ten PM during like the summer?
No, they don't ever do that.
They don't ever do that, okay, wasn't sure.
Yeah. I've got a quick question for Chief Bedola, Charlie, you still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Um, name change years ago, right, it's no longer safe and sane?
I don't know. That I don't know, I mean, they are all safe and sane and the list has gotten stronger, but I I haven't.
It's. Still call safe to say, I thought it was just fire marshal approved, but, okay.
Yeah, I think it's they, I haven't any name change, but yeah, because um. Yeah, the safe and saints are the ones that are approved. The other ones that don't have the state fire marshal ser- uh stamp are the illegal ones, but we know that those are the bottle rockets, illegal ones that go aerials. And there's even some that. They started banning like the butterflies, piccolo pizza, stuff like that, don't have the seal, so has to have the seal on it.
Okay, yeah, that's, I just wanna make sure that we have the title correct, cause I hear they're kicking that around about ten, fifteen years ago.
Yeah. I have, yeah, it's been consistent from what we have on there, I'm pretty sure.
Perfect, thank you, Chief.
Uh-huh, you got it.
Um. Do we have anything from applicant, do you, would you like to say anything? Please, please come up to the. And 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 state your name and um. Give us what you need to give us. Can you hit the button there to turn on the mic? It's a green?
Uh, my name is Laura Capuano, I'm parent at Ansar. I was just told yesterday that somebody needed to come to represent us here, um, the reason I I didn't mean to interrupt and I don't know the whole process here, so I apologize. Um, when we sat through it last year, somebody had mentioned, you know, you could have gone earlier, so I was just asking if that was a possibility. Um, it's our biggest fundraiser of the year, we all get trained, all the parents volunteer. Um, to help make it work and all the pros, the different parents, we split it up to the different um sports. To support the sport, so it's our biggest fundraiser of the year, so, you know. Appreciate it and we're amendable to me if you need to change the hours to nine o'clock, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Just do we have any public comment on this?
Seeing no speaker cards and no hands raised.
Okay. Anything further? Want to go for it?
No, yeah, I just had a.
Changes?
A a question on which one that the. City manager and the city attorney are recommending. Attachment one, two, or three with changes?
Yeah, it did have a number two on it.
Okay.
And then the paragraph, and then the paragraph to be amended is uh number two on page two, where it says ten PM at the third and ninth. That's right.
Ending at nine.
Ending at nine, right?
Hmm.
And. Uh, the final discharge on the fourth at ten. And was there one other?
It was it, that was it.
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay, I made. It was, I believe, seven.
Seven, that's what it was.
Yep, yep.
Sales on the fourth. And at seven PM. Uh, okay, I make a motion to approve. Um. Attack uh. Version number two, attachment, attachment two. Um, with the changes as the. Last fireworks ending on the fourth of July at ten PM, uh. Daily sales ending at nine PM and sales on the fourth ending at seven PM.
Second that motion.
Mayor Protip Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Maurice Lopez?
Yes.
And Mayor Frios?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, happy to help.
Okay. And last action item B. I'm gonna put my specs on this. Right, B is amend the permanent local housing allocation. Program will allocate ninety-five percent of the two thousand nineteen grant funds, which was seventy-two thousand. One hundred and ninety-nine dollars of a five-year total of a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, nine nine nine, uh, for accessory dwelling units, uh, code compliant grants to homeless supportive services. And five percent administrative allocation from uh two thousand nineteen of thirty-eight hundred dollars. For the county administrative costs and program. And ninety-five percent of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-four. Funds for ADU compliance grants and five percent. For city administration costs. Dawn, is there any way you can help me unscramble that?
Yes, 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 I can, um.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, um, Scott, you won't be surprised to find out this is a state housing grant. Uh, yeah, and we're just trying to make sense of it, um, on the. Uh, yeah, and we're just trying to make sense of it, um, on the very last page of the report is, is this table. And, and that's really the, the simplest way for me to present this item to the city council and the, and the community tonight. Um, we have a before and after, so um, what we're hoping to do. We learned in twenty twenty-two that we were receiving uh funds from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And some of these funds dated back to twenty nineteen, and so now we're told all of a sudden that, hey, you better spend this money or it's going to expire. And we promoted our ADU compliance program, we got one solid application for about fifteen thousand dollars. But nowhere near uh this, this, this seventy-five thousand dollar, seventy-six thousand dollar amount. Uh, that's required to be spent for twenty nineteen. In the back of the program, the last two years, we had programmed some homeless, uh, s- some support for the city of public health and their homeless services program. And so what we, what was recommended from the state, so we wouldn't lose our money, thank you. Michael. So that we wouldn't lose any of this twenty nineteen money, is to simply reverse the order. And spend the money on the uh, the county homeless services first, and that allows us more time to, to promote the. Accessory dwelling unit program for our residents to help them come into compliance. So, uh, following the state's recommendation, uh, that was the simplest way to make a quick change to this program. And avoid losing the, the seventy-six thousand dollars. So we uh drafted an MOU with the county. And uh Enrique Arroyo, they took it to the county board of suits already and, and got their approval. Uh, to uh hit the ground running uh with a homeless services support program. Uh, that's the city of San Juan Batista uses these housing funds to support. So that's the recommendation here, is to reprogram the uh twenty nineteen funds from ADU. To homeless services, that's it in a nutshell, and um. The resolution had to be precise, because there's five percent allowed for admin, and the county's asked for that too, it's thirty-eight hundred dollars in this case. So that's, that's in a nutshell, that's what the county AC, what the state is asking us to do, is reprogram these funds and use them more quickly.
Thank you. Does he have any questions?
Sorry.
A- a- and the, the very last line is for five percent for city administrative costs, that's for us.
That's for us.
Okay.
So they're the four years, they're the four years.
Okay.
Questions, Jackie?
So, so switching the priorities allows us to capture that money and not lose it, correct?
Correct.
In a nutshell.
In a nutshell.
Okay, and the priority of the spend is to allocate towards homeless services?
Earlier in the program, rather than in the last few years.
Okay, so do we, does the city have a? Potential idea or plan how we can use that in our town, or does it some of it go back to the county?
Um, it's twofold, the county's developed a homeless strike team. So the use for the city to call along in case we have a homeless issue, especially at the library or in other places. So the services would be available to us and they would build us for that. Um, but also to help support the shelter, because a certain portion of that should go to our city.
So it's not primarily homeless issues directly in our town?
It's questionable whether or not we have a volume large enough to use that much money. So it's, it's just our, it's just our offer to help support programs in general. They had, they put together a strike team and they hired a homeless manager, so it's like paying for.
So we could get them out and they could maybe walk our streets and assess if we have need?
Sure, sure, they could work with Roy and on a regular basis.
Yeah, cause I, I think that would be a, a start, I mean, cause we, I mean, we think we know, but I. Believe that we may, maybe don't.
Uh-huh.
And we could use that funding to have them come out, I mean, that's their work. And work with Mister Morales. You know, we already know that there's a potential with someone that visits the library and. Whoever else we think we may know that lives on the streets, you know, RVs, et cetera, et cetera. That might be one way that we can allocate that money that we actually get the benefit of it in our town.
Yeah, no, we could certainly, we could certainly work with them on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, you answered my question, I was making sure that the counties already have this established and not. Talking about having it established and then we send them money and then it goes away again, like that last time we sent them three hundred thousand dollars.
The, the state, the, the state was clear that we're not supplying money, it's gotta be new money for new projects.
Okay, and the county for sure has this. Task force?
Yes, the striking.
Strike, okay. Okay. I just wanna make sure, we're gonna send any money to the county that they actually use it, um. You know, though we have had this discussion, um, any public comment on this?
No speaker cards received and no hands raised.
Okay. Motion?
Go ahead. You wanna do this one?
The motion is to accept as written, amend the permanent local housing allocation. Program allocating ninety-five percent of the twenty nineteen grant funds. Seventy-two thousand one hundred ninety-nine of a five-year total of four hundred fifty-five thousand. Nine hundred ninety-nine dollars from accessory dwelling unit. ADU code compliance grants to homeless supportive services. And the five percent administrative allocation from twenty nineteen of thirty-eight hundred. For county administrative costs and programming of ninety-five percent of the twenty twenty-two, the twenty twenty-four. Funds for ADU compliance grants and five percent for city administrative costs.
I'll second it.
Mayor Protip, Mayor Protip Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Maurice Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Frios?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we're down to discussion item, consider, consider a vacant property registration program. Versus a vacancy tax. Dawn, I think you got this one.
Yeah, and I've got Stacy, thank you Stacy for hanging out with us all night.
No problem.
Stacy Bristos here from City Gate to help us with this, um, the council, uh, per council member Freeman's request, looked at a vacancy tax option. And the possibility of using that as a stick. To encourage uh downtown property owners to uh fill their vacancies sooner than later. So that this tax would be invoked, uh, if a business was vacant for a certain amount of time. And seemed to be going unfilled, uh, the vacancy was not being filled quickly. And Stacy had brought to my attention that there are other ways to do that, because to create a new tax is a whole campaign and Prop two eighteen process. And voter initiative, and she brought to my attention, that I'm bringing to the council's attention. The concept of a vacancy registration, and so, um. There is, uh, at the back of this report, uh, vacancy vacant property registration program from West Hollywood. Which is uh a really nice example of how to work with property owners and to register properties and, and the um. The fines as well as the fees are, are, are very, uh, very favorable to encourage these property owners to come in line. Um, and there's uh two, four, five different types of properties. Um, listed as stable properties, at-risk properties, problematic and failed properties, and. To register your failed properties, a twenty-six thousand dollar uh cost in West Hollywood. Um, with that, um, I was, I, you know what, in my packet, Liz, I only have the October eighteen, twenty twenty-two staff report. And I don't see the, 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 the staff report I wrote for this item, but. Nonetheless, uh, at least the West Hollywood program is in my packet and, and the council can refer to that and. Well, let Stacy elaborate on, on that and, and other projects that she's seen. Uh, to raise money and encourage business owners to, to rent their, their facility, Stacy, do you wanna press something, thank you. Ah, there it is, okay.
Sure, I, I think this is a nice alternative to, for council to consider, you know, anytime. Um, obviously Dawn talked about, well, first of all, I'm sorry, should back up, hi again, it's so nice to see you all. Mayor, council, community, city manager, uh, great to be sort of in your presence again, I look forward to seeing you in a few weeks, so. With that said, I'll jump back in, um. So yeah, it's a nice alternative, you know, anytime that we're, you know, wanna go forward with, you know, any kind of tax consideration, you. I always want someone to be mindful and councils to be mindful of, you know, there's gonna be other opportunities for changes in taxes, whether that's. User utility taxes or property tax, transfer tax fees, or, um, you know, other things, and we wanna look at those. Um, and so when we add more and more taxes, it can get a little heavy and the community can be a little resistant to it, so. Um, there, it's also, this is a much simpler approach. When you need to make amendments um to the program, you don't have to take it back to the voters, this is something that you can just bring to council with a staff report and make adjustments or amendments and pivots. Um, as the economy needs, um. Change, and so with that, I've seen this work successfully in many different jurisdictions, I've, I've worked with the program myself. And it, it's a nice approach in the sense that, you know, notifications go out to the businesses and the vacant property owners, letting them know that this program is coming. It gives them opportunity to update their properties and come into compliance, and then if they don't. Um, sort of this is what happens, uh, this is how the registration program works, and these are the, um, violations, penalties and fees. Uh, if they're not in compliance, and so I've seen it work really well, I've seen it uh motivate people to. Uh, maintain the properties, uh, to the standards that cities desire. I've also seen it motivate people to uh rent their properties, because the fees that they incur sort of outweigh them sitting on the properties and not moving forward. So it's, it's a nice approach, uh, the, it's likely that your code enforcement officer, did I get that title right? I just, horrible about that. It's, it's something that that individual would probably. Uh, be enforcing, they're typically pretty fast recovery and, and the efforts, um, with these kinds of programs, and so. Uh, it's definitely a program that works as far as, you know, blight reduction and enhancing the downtown and those kinds of things, and so. I could talk about it a lot, I've done this quite a bit, so I would rather maybe just hear questions from you about maybe what. Um, your concerns or thoughts are, one thing I will share, and I think your, your law enforcement is in the room, is that, um, typically these programs come with, um. Trespass orders, so that the property owners will also sign off on a trespass order, so that if there is somebody that is illegal occup. Occupying the property like a. Um, eh, those are not, they're not with homes, um, sometimes will, um, camp out there. Or, you know, kids break in, those kinds of things, it gives the law enforcement the opportunity to remove individuals immediately without having, um. You know, cause some people might say, well, I live here, it's, I can be here, and you don't know that, so, uh, it's another tool for law enforcement to be able to remove, um, depends and. Um, potential dangers that occur, you know, when people squat, um, uh, in these properties, so. That's another tool that comes typically along with these packages that, that's helpful, so. I will see if you have any questions.
Me, thank you. Hey, um, a, a couple of question, eh, or comments and questions, um, I, I like that better than. Um, the Oakland ten exemption for, I, I don't wanna pay because I don't have any money, but if you. Had somebody in your building, you might have money. Um, so, uh, I, I like the, 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 uh, West Hollywood, um, version. The program, um, better, um, easier and quicker to implement. Um, this could be done at the next council meeting as opposed to monies being spent at the next election.
Correct.
And the language about. Going in. Trespassing is included. Or can be included readily?
It can be, yeah, your law enforcement can work with you for the next, um, session for council to show you what a trespass order would look like. Um, and probably attach the document and can provide the, the appropriate legal language that needs to accompany it, but it's, it's pretty simple.
And, and I'm not sure that we actually have that problem today, but, um, who knows what will happen tomorrow. Um, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks for the alternatives, Dawn.
Oh, yeah, thank you Stacy, nice to see you again. Um, so, yeah, I think, um, this would be the easier route. And probably the friendlier route and starting from ground zero, cause I noticed that this has been, this was discussed back in. Twenty twenty-two. Um, I tried to go back in five minutes or listen to the meeting. But to no avail, but, you know, we just kinda pick up from where we are now. Um, that's like a lot of lost time and lost fees that we could have collected, but. I think we need to do something, it's a good starting point. Um, you kind of answered my questions that I was formulating about how does this overlap with code enforcement? And I think you explained that, because a lot of this does lend itself for code, um, violations, you know, health and safety. Et cetera, et cetera, property blight. Um, so you answered that, um. The other thing I had was, I know you chose West Hollywood. It's always good to not have to reinvent the wheel. But my ask is, is there any other like cities like ours closer to our city? Size, history, that maybe has something like this in place?
So initially, when uh I was talking with Dawn, I sent him three examples that were fairly different. Just to give him a feel of, you know, what could work in your jurisdiction. Um, Hollywood seemed to be a pretty good fit, it had probably ninety percent of what I thought maybe you guys. That would make sense for your jurisdiction, of course, you can modify it any way you want, um, I didn't do any kind of full analysis, I did sort of a. Online search, um, and if, I liked theirs better, there was only a couple that I saw, and I didn't spend a ton of time on it. That were with smaller jurisdictions, but they were very minimal. Um, I liked the more completeness of this package, a lot of them don't necessarily have. Uh, whether it's the TROs, or they didn't have, um, the administrative fee portions of it really clarified. Um, a lot of them had just sort of the simple vacant property ordinance, um, maybe with a standard fee as opposed to a registration program. So this one just felt like a more complete packet, um, that obviously can be adjusted and, and formulated for the next round, so. I hope that answers the question.
Still, if you could just entertain my, my comment or my ask is to just maybe throw in something that's a closer to. Our size of our jurisdiction, and I think it'd be nice to have something to compare it with. Um, since we are pretty unique in West Hollywood and San Juan Batista, it's just, you know, it's so different.
But I, I think, if I may, Mayor, um. Maybe the only modification would be, um, the monetary fees associated with it because of the. The difference in between West Hollywood and San Juan, um, but. Um, when you walk down our streets and you see. At least three storefronts, not including alleyways, but actual storefronts. That are vacant today and have been for over a year. Um, it's disconcerting and, you know, I, I. I don't think the fees are, are so egregious or outrageous. Um, so going with somebody small who is not as complete as, as this one. I don't know, I, I think it's gone on for far too long, and that's why I brought it up at the last council meeting. For the, for the tax, um, we need to do something and we need to do it now, and if this, this gets us there. Today or next month versus. Next year, I'm all for it.
Fees, these are the, the new words for taxes in California. Lumber fees, gas fees, yeah, um. Yeah, this does look a little daunting when you're, you know, you're looking at problematic, and there, there's no definitions of what these properties are, you know, what's a problematic or at-risk property. It'd be kinda nice to see a little more of the, less, well.
I believe they have a little bit of definition.
Yeah, okay, I got, yeah, that's. They, I'm, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, we can tailor that.
Some, some, just. I understand the concern, I think Gilroy had this concern a while back ago, and they, because, you know, when they're all there. They were forcing all those businesses to do the. Um, seismic retrofit, a lot of businesses closed, cause they couldn't afford to do it, and. At least, so what they at least did was with their property owners, is they have. These storefronts look like, look like they're actually. Being used, there's some type of a display or a. You know, like a, a faux display, um. And, and it, it does look a little better, um, you know, some. Over glaring facts, uh, twelfth year in a row. California's fiftieth in business friendliness. Um, influ- um, inflation has just gone up again. And the feds are saying that they're not gonna lower interest rates anytime soon, so how do you start a business with that kind of? You know, how, how do you or I come into San Juan and start a business with those kind of numbers? Just, just the interest rates alone for any type of a, a personal loan, and we're talking. They're talking in a high percentage, I could see this, something like this when, you know, the economy's booming and we're doing great, and we really, hey, let's get, but. I mean, um. And I, I agree with you, there are a couple shops in town, I mean, there's a note in the window on one of them says, um, remodeling be done. On July third, two thousand twenty, and it's been the, the same number, I, I get that, um. Still wanna be, you know. We had a lot of out-of-city landlords here too. We had a lot of out of city landlords here too. Um, which is kind of tough. So I, I just, when you start talking taxes and fees. I just get really nervous. Um, maybe because I paid our taxes yesterday and it wasn't a very good day for me. Yeah, so, um.
Sorry. And perhaps Mayor, what you're looking or seeking is that, you know, this is the. Sort of the stick tool. It's a softer approach than the tax because there's amendment opportunities and other things. And obviously you guys can adjust the fees accordingly, you know, but the carrot side of it is looking at as you bring on your economic development specialty person. That, you know, some of those goals and objectives that were in your five-year strategic plan of various business incentive programs is that, you know, having those. Opportunities at the same time, that, you know, we do offer, maybe it's a facade improvement program or a, you know, forgivable five-year grant program, et cetera. So that, you know, there's opportunities for you to enhance your business and we support that. But on the other side, i- if you're not gonna. Come into compliance and be a good business owner, then there's this side too. So it's finding that balance of maybe both. Is that perhaps what I'm hearing?
Well, I'm just, I'm just stating the. The financial facts. It's to, to start a new business in California now is, is. Number fifty in the, in the union. Um, so. And, and we just saw a stat where our population is going to start decreasing and, and, and it's happening statewide. But it's, we're not the only ones. I mean, we're jumping ship like crazy. Um.
But these are current businesses. A, a vacant building is, is a business owner owning that building.
Yeah, but who's gonna move into it if they can't afford to the startup capital and, uh, you know, because of the interest rates and. Um, if, if, if tourism is declining in California.
Business.
If, if, if tourism is declining in California like it is, then how do we get? Uh, how do you get a business to be able to s-? We've been so lucky with the businesses we have in downtown right now that have survived this long. Um, and it's, it's, we were just talking about Sarah's place. And she's been there probably the longest in a long time from um, in, in that little corner. Um. Thank goodness for her, but it's, it.
We're the home of the pinnacles. We get three hundred and fifty thousand people driving by our, our front door every day or every year.
I don't try, I hear they go twenty-five. Um, I, and I understand this. I understand the concern and I understand the vacant windows and it, it bothers me too, but I just seem so heavy-handed. Um, especially in this economic time. I mean, we're hurting as a nation. We're hurting and California's hurting the most. They're the highest gas tax, the highest income tax, right? And we keep setting all these records every day. And, 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 and we can't get anybody to do business here.
But if, if we don't fill those buildings, we are not going to be a city.
I, you know, I, I keep hearing this and um, it's funny.
Anybody gonna wanna come in here?
It's funny because in, you know, e- eighteen sixty-nine, it was established and it's never gone away.
Yay.
Through depressions, through world wars, through, you know, global conflicts, we've never. Through, through pandemic, we didn't go away. So, uh, like I said, I do understand the, the. The concern. It's just. It just, it seems to me to be very, is very heavy-handed. And this is much more, this is much more um, lightweight than a tax.
Yeah.
And the tax would, it'd probably cost us a fortune just to get the tax on the, on the ballot and everything else. And I guess maybe because I, I think maybe I'm in Jackie's camp. I'm looking at these massive numbers like failed properties, twenty-six thousand dollars. It's like, phew.
So, uh, like Stacy said, we could adjust the fees accordingly.
I understand that. Okay, so a dollar fifty and a four dollars.
They have, somebody has to feel the, the weight of an empty building though. I'm getting a tax write-off because. Because my building isn't, doesn't have income on it because nobody's renting it, so I don't have income, so I get a tax write-off, so I'm making money.
Do you know that for sure? Is, is that, is that? That for sure?
Well, isn't that how? Business works?
I don't know.
I, I don't know.
I don't know, unless somebody can show me that, that's to that, that in writing. I mean, you're assuming that. The building right here is, they're getting a, a kickback. You're assuming that. You don't know that for a fact.
I, I do not know that for a fact.
So that's my concern. And that's probably why we're discussing this.
Would it be better to have somebody for me in my build, if I'm not, if I'm not getting tax relief? Because I'm not making any money on my building, would it not behoove me to get somebody in there? That would pay me on a monthly basis so that I can have some income?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Of what you're not getting is the point is nobody's doing business in California anymore. People are leaving the state. We're the fiftieth. In business friendliness. So we're not, we're not, we're not pulling in any more businesses. So. Some of these places, I mean. Who are we gonna attract? I mean, I, I get, I get what you're ta- saying. I mean, we did get a, we have a new antique store coming in. I might get that, um, which, but you know, every city in this town, every little town's going through the same thing.
Let's get restaurants in here.
Well, that's.
Seventeen bars. We're fourteen shy.
I'm, I'm all for that. No, I'm serious. Murphy's has thirty-two wine tasting venues in, in the little town. I, I have no problem with doing that.
Totally. How do we incentivize?
That's the thing.
Uh, Hollister Weiner, Weiner, why are you sorry, guys? Wineries to come in here and open tasting rooms. When, because the roads are so terrible, they can't get the expensive vehicles out there to go to their. Uh, uh, properties and have big events there. So bring your wine over here. I don't know. I don't know. How do we incentivize?
Getting that repaid your short, by the way. But, um.
I drive it.
No, I get it. And it's gonna be, the carrot's gonna have to be gold-plated with chocolate on top and some more gold plating. I mean, that's a, that's just. It's. I don't know.
So, but we do have, we do have that in our, um. Uh, we've discussed it at our last city gate about uh, repainting or beautifying or. Whatever that takes and, and maybe a facelift would, would be an incentive for somebody to come in and open up a little shop.
Or maybe. Letters to these vacant property owners saying, hey, just so you know, there's, this is what we're thinking about in the near future and it's not gonna be cheap for you.
This is what we're thinking about in June.
This is what we're thinking about in the near future and this, this isn't gonna be cheap for you. So, you know, start scraping paint.
I, I, that's a fine idea.
I may interject. I think like anything, it's like, you know, they're adults. They invested in property. And I agree with, with um, Vice Mayor that there's a little bit of, you get a write-off if you're not making any money.
But do you know that? Do you know that for sure?
Well, I can't say that so-and-so down there, but it's kind of a known thing that that happens. There are loopholes. And so if they're still making money and they're getting their taxes reduced, what concern is it to them? But you know what? It affects us.
Totally affects us.
And it would be nice that there would be some, and most of them don't live in the county even. So it doesn't affect them or the state. They're outside investors. But, you know, we need to protect our town. It's not gonna go away. I agree with the mayor. It's been through a lot of different, um. Adverse um, situations. You know, we lost this, you know, plan of COVID. But I really feel like we have to think out of the box. And I think we've been soft as a city for a long time. Which is why you and I sit on the SOI and we fight hard for that. So this is just one more avenue that we need to just. Fight for our city and not be soft. And, yeah. And I feel that when you buy a property, you don't ask the city to buy you a gallon of paint. You paint your own house. And you mow your own weeds.
Yeah, and a lot of, a lot of these, a lot of these downtown properties, these have been in families for decades. It's not like they're. A lot of people, there, and there are some new owners in downtown. Um. And, and nobody can move in. I mean, just. There are some recent purchases that were, are brand new. I get that. Um. It just, uh, be, maybe see some similar language with, like. Less. I guess maybe I'm just getting blown away by the, the definitions and, and it's pretty vague, you know, the problematic and all that kind of stuff. And I, I get the whole squatting thing. That's becoming absolutely ridiculous. Um, matter of fact, there are companies popping up to get rid of squatters. I don't know how legal they are, but they're happening, especially like in Dwolney County.
Well, no, it, it touches on sort of the tenant rights. And if somebody squats for a certain period of time, then there's tenant rights. And then you can't go through eviction processes. Then there's also a lot of these properties end up in foreclosure and then you can't touch them because they're going through a foreclosure process. And then you're sitting with. Vacant properties with other challenges. So a, a lot of things to consider as you, as you go down this process for sure.
Well, we're just been blessed that we don't have that problem. Mainly because we don't have anything for the, we don't have an armory or any food.
Yeah. In, invest in our city. That's all I'm asking is for these property owners to invest in our city. Make an investment in our city and we'll invest in you.
Can we prom- how do we promise that though? How do we promise we can invest in them? How do we promise we can get them? Upgrades to their windows and doors and, and, you know, how do we promise that? Uh, I mean, that's. I, I, I get it. It's a great slogan, but.
Yeah, I'm not talking about paying for doors and windows.
What, what do we invest in? How do we invest in a, in a business then?
If, if. Baseball, if you build it, they will come. If you make it pretty, they will come. We don't get people here now because. We're open when we wanna be open. Uh, we're not open every day of the week and. Uh, we don't have a lot to offer. And I get the whole part, we don't have a lot to offer. I mean, we've lost. Uh, we lost, I can't remember, three or four of the best ofs of San Benito County in. In, no, it was at least three, maybe four. Um.
It was Route twenty-five and that little cool little store.
Char. And there was, I can't remember the other one. Uh, I think there were three. Uh, anyway, um. I lost my train of thought now.
Invest in, eh, eh, invest in your.
Yeah, so, yeah, but if there's no buildings open and nobody's gonna wanna come here. If we're open when we wanna be open, then nobody's gonna wanna come here anymore. I expected you to be open. I have heard that so many times.
And if you don't expect our property owners on the third street to upkeep their property, then no one's gonna come here either.
That, yeah.
So there is responsibility that I think goes back to the property.
Absolutely.
It lies with them. I'm about to say from the city budget, we're gonna, we're gonna purchase your window retrofits or your new door. I think that needs to come from them. And I think that it's a start which, um. Ms. Bristow has prevent, presented to us, at least take an inventory. If we can start with at least that. Take an inventory of what's vacant. And I think the um, definitions of the property types. Are pretty clear. And with that inventory as a starting point, we can also identify which ones are stable, which ones are not.
And, and throw them a letter and say, hey, this is coming at you.
Yeah, cause maybe we're not even aware of more vacant properties. We may have, all three of us may have an idea that I can think of like. Four or five, but maybe there's more, maybe there's less. So.
Okay.
Without money attached to it at this point.
Let me throw it out to the public right now. Let me beat this, uh, mic. Please.
Alex, let me, Mayor, uh, Frill's idea. About not having to tax somebody, charge somebody. I know we have a lot of empty uh, buildings here and they've been empty for a while. But why doesn't the city, instead of charging or taxing somebody? Why don't we have some type of incentive to bring people in with lower city fees? Help permits. I talked to a person that had a business, a restaurant. In Trespinas and they closed down. He lost his lease. I said, why'd you guys come to San Juan? That'd be a perfect place for San Juan. First thing he asked me, any buildings have a kitchen? No, not really. He says it costs about eighty thousand dollars to build a decent kitchen. Okay, um, we have historical restrictions. Um, some of these buildings are over a hundred years old. What's it gonna cost to re, to remodel a building? Maybe if we lower some of our fees. To get them to come. And then come up with some kind of an idea like a floating tax rate or something according to their sales. If they survive and prosper, well then we get some of that back. Uh, and so, I mean, some of the city fees are. Pretty steep and, uh, you know, somebody that, like, just to the mayor's point, um, doing business in. In California is tough. You really, it's really a gamble to, for somebody to come and start a business. And then with all these high fees and restrictions and, um. It's not very encouraging. If we can figure some way to. lessen that impact, maybe we can draw some people in.
Thank you.
You still have a minute left.
Yeah, Mike had a minute left. Well. Okay, so discussion item, um. We have a future agenda item after this, so we can, we'll have a good discussion. See, look, we can have it civil and not. Make everybody feel bad like, like some other places near us. Yeah, yeah, so wonderful. No hugging. Can't do that. Okay, can we move on? Good? Okay. Future item agendas. Agenda items. Do you want? How do you wanna do that? We just start with you. So you got anything?
I have nothing. I'd like to bring back the vacancy. Property registration.
I'd be okay with that, seeing some. Real-life numbers. Like these. Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying. Let's, let's see something. Anything else?
Yeah, I'm all for an inventory. I'm all for um, making the, the fees in alignment with where we're at and. Sending out a letter prior to this going out to the owners. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, and I have nothing else after that.
I think to tag on, to tag on with the Vice Mayor, to Vice Mayor Jordan is, um. Along with that, I know that some of the vacant buildings or buildings that are supposedly. Stalling with their projected construction, like what's going on maybe with that little update. On Casarosa and Neil's Market, if we can have an update on that. Um, cause they've been vacant for a long time. Uh, the other thing that I wanna bring back on the future, for future item, and this may seem really quirky, but I wanna talk about the three wine barrels. Uh, we no longer have parklets in some of those blocks and I see a lot of times, sometimes that third barrel just kind of sticks out too far and. The common roadway, um, and do we really need three barrels on each corner? So I'd like to talk about that. I think it would allow maybe an extra parking. On each block for another vehicle if we kind of talked about those wine barrels.
I don't have anything.
And also. And then can.
Hit the button.
Sorry.
Hard laid is a hard play.
Okay, okay, sorry. I didn't.
Go ahead.
Um, the flock cameras I think are great. It's great. It's going across the highway because there's been graffiti, but also. I don't know if you're all aware, but someone did graffiti on our mural. So is there a possibility for another security camera or lighting up there? In, in sensitive areas?
Yeah, we talked about why the.
Where's this on the, um, Washington? That's funny. I'm always walking. Every time I walk out there, I'm like, well, where's somebody get it yet? They're, they're tagging the mission.
The mission?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, the cemetery wall on the backside.
They're sad.
Yeah, they're tagging someone. But that's a good point. Maybe, I mean, well, it, doesn't it seem like the, um. So I, I saw the data, was it Oakland that just got a hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant for flock cameras or. For cameras? Can we? Piggyback onto that thing and get, get the Oakland price? Yeah, they just got a massive chunk of money for, for, for cameras. So, I mean.
If you saw that in an article, send it over.
If you saw that in an article, send it over.
Oh, yeah, great. Yeah.
Lighting at Abbey?
Oh, thank you.
Speaking of Monday Night Lights? Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, Doug, can we have a a a update on that, on the lights? For Abbey Park? Please.
Please, please. Uh, you'll get a budget. Uh, in, at the May meeting, and you'll also uh get the MOU on the sphere of influence.
Okay, but the.
Future items.
Oh, okay.
All right, are we still on future items?
Yeah, yeah, I was just like, because um Leslie asked about the lighting at the park and we approved that this year, so. If we do that, do we have to roll that over if it's not done?
Of course, it's in the CIP, so we can roll it over. I hit the pause button because of the dark sky ordinance, realizing how complicated, and I didn't want to violate our own code. So I did hit the pause button on that because that's just a word.
Well, there's a, yeah, there's a, some, I mean, the time with those, the lighting's been established for. We played ball there fifty years ago, so it's, it's been lit for. The precedents have been set, and but we talked about that. We put timers on it so they don't go all night and.
LED versus.
LED versus, yeah.
Time to have, and also the. Their shield that you can put on them so they only shine down, they don't shine out.
Yeah.
That type of thing. I I just don't want to rush into it and have it come out like an airport, you know. Good job of those lights, boy. They sure work.
Okay.
Only four hundred and eighty, they wouldn't miss.
Four hundred and eighty cameras, but how much is that? Yeah, yeah, that's. I would think if we can, can we piggyback in on that? Does anybody know anybody in Oakland? Up at City Hall? Nancy Hayes going to. Okay, um, looks like we are finished, huh? We all done with the motion adjourned?
Motion to second. You said it, you said.
I said motion to adjourn.
You said motion to adjourn. I seconded it. I heard it.
Thank you, Stacy. See you soon.
Thank you, Stacy.
Bye. Thanks, see you soon.
Ready, Liz?
Yes, um, Mayor Protemp Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes.
And Mayor Freos.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Thanks, Mike. Mikey, Mike, thanks for being here.